There are three members of the school committee here plus one member on the phones listening. This is a special meeting of the school committee. There is a quorum of us present, so we have to open the meeting. Myself, Jeff Swet, the chair. This is Yugen and Mr. Lazarus is over there. And Mrs. Caparicio is on the phone listening. So this is an official meeting of the school committee. It's approximately seven o'clock on Thursday the 14th. We only have one thing on the agenda tonight, and that is for the superintendent to give you a presentation on the possibility of moving the eighth grade this coming fall to this high school. Now, I want to assure especially those of you who are skeptical about information in meetings that this is in fact not a done deal. No matter what you may have heard, this is something that will be voted on by the school committee. We will obviously take the recommendation of the superintendent very seriously, but it has not been debated in private, that would be illegal. And we will have an open debate about this. But I can assure you speaking personally that what you have to say tonight is very important to me and how I feel about it when I cast my vote. And I just have one vote like every other member of the school committee. So if you have a comment to make, if you have a question, it is extremely important to the school committee and to me personally that you ask it and not be bashful and not worry about what other people are thinking or feeling. We want to hear from you. This is being recorded thanks to Christian. And it is both audio as well as visual. That microphone is available, so if you want to say something, please don't be bashful. Come down to the microphone so everybody can hear what you have to say. And finally, I greatly appreciate the fact that you are here. I know it's an evening that some of you may have better things to do, but the fact that you chose to come here and let us know what you think about this and hear what the superintendent has to say is extremely important to me and I am grateful for your presence. With that, unless there are any questions, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Christian, do I need to speak into the microphone?
He's right there.
That's up to you. If they can't hear you, then yes. If they can hear you, then no. I can hear you just fine.
Okay, so I'll use my teacher voice. If I start to fade because it's been a while, you let me out and I'll go back to the microphone. So first of all, thank you so much for coming out. I really appreciate your involvement and your willingness to come listen and ask questions. As Mr. Swet said, this is not a done deal. We're gathering information. I'm listening. Before I make my recommendation to the committee, I will be visiting the middle school next Tuesday and talking to students to get their input. I'll be visiting the seventh graders. And likely there'll be a written questionnaire sent out to the seventh graders to also gain their input on their questions, their thoughts, and any other advice or comments they would like to share. So the way I thought we could do this tonight would be just to go through a very brief presentation. Poop, there, it works. The agenda would be to provide you with some information. Listen to your comments, questions, answer what we can. If we can't answer them, we certainly will get back to you. We've had an icon on our website for people to ask questions. For the probably the past three weeks, we've received a half a dozen questions perhaps, and we've answered them. We've tried to weave those questions into our presentation tonight. So hopefully, if you had them, we'll answer it. If not, again, happy to answer any questions you may have. So the first question is, why is this being examined? About what is there about growth for our eighth graders to be here at the high school? Would there be a transition program and will a decision be made? Those are kind of common theme questions that occurred throughout the last several weeks. Currently, our high school enrollment is 525 students. If this move would occur and we would have five grades, the high school would be 785 students. Currently, the middle school is 793 students. If we would go to three grades, then it would be 594 students. The high school was built to house 1,000 students. The middle school was also built to house approximately 1,000 students. So if you look at early space, it's relatively equal. Right now, we do have eighth grade students coming over. This is the second year that we've had students from the eighth grade come over and attend dual enrollment classes. The students coming from the eighth grade this year are 42 students. The students coming over could take math and science or they can take English and history. We have, the option of eighth graders can participate in athletics at the high school. We go through a waiver process and the NIAA grants the waiver. This year, we have approximately 48 graders participating in the athletic programs. And I do believe we have a few seventh graders, is that correct?
Field hockey.
For field hockey. And because of that, we were able to field, to field hockey team. Had we not had the seventh graders, it would have been very sparse. One of the questions would be that came up was the STEAM Academy. And right now, we do have an eighth grade STEAM Academy. If the eighth grade was coming to the high school, the academy would move to the high school. As we have an eighth grade STEAM Academy now, we're getting ready to launch a ninth grade STEAM Academy at the high school. So you would have those two that would be able to work together. What we do know is if this would happen, we would have a transfer of teachers. Currently, at the high school, they operate on a BEAM system. The middle school operates on an AP position. What we would do is we would mirror the high school model and create a dean position at the high school that would be responsible for eighth grade students. The budget. The budget, this move would be relatively budget neutral except for any moving costs would never be less than $5,000 to $6,000. And we would do most of that internally. The budget that we're talking about would be, right now, we have X number of dollars proportioned for eighth grade students at the middle school. That money would be transferred to the high school so Mr. Caladino would have the ability to make the purchases, et cetera, et cetera, for the students that were moved. It would not remain at the middle school. Technology. We've made huge strides in technology over the past several years in our district. We're a one-to-one at mining. The middle school is almost a one-to-one and will be a one-to-one school next year with Chromebooks as well as the high school will be a one-to-one next year also with Chromebooks. What we would do is this would not disrupt that plan. If there was a need to ship computers over because of the students, we would do that because we're committed to do a one-to-one project in all three buildings. So that's not going to change. The potential schedule for eighth graders, they would come, would be near the schedule at the high school. So I believe it's four ninety?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three minutes and one ninety?
Four eighty-threes.
Four eighty-three blocks.
Blocks.
Okay, so four eighty-three blocks would be the high school schedule that the eighth grade would mirror. The academic and elective courses. You would have the traditional academic courses. The elective courses would be foreign language, art, music, et cetera, et cetera. That would not change. Because of the makeup of the high school, what we know is there is no way to isolate just eighth grade and put them in a section of the building. What we do know is though, we have the ability at lunchtime and eighth graders would have a separate lunch. We currently have applied and we received international baccalaureate status for our high school. We are moving in. We have teachers that have gone through international baccalaureate training. That will begin next year. That would be made available for our eighth graders the following year as ninth graders. Our dual enrollment opportunities would continue and we certainly would be asking for student input with the various courses. Now, I want to come back to the dual enrollment opportunities for students for just a second. Currently, if we have dual enrollment students, and we do have 43, they can take two courses and that's it. The courses must occur in the morning. They can take math and science or they can take English and history. They can't do four courses at one time because they go back and forth, is that correct?
They take all four.
They take all four?
What you're getting at is they would be able to switch. If they're strong in math and English, they could just do that. Or English and history, whatever the strength may be, they'd be able to divide it up.
Right, that's okay. So what we would be able to do is to expand opportunities for our students. We have students that are very gifted in foreign language. We have students that would be gifted in art. We have students that are gifted in music, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, they do not have the opportunity to take high school dual enrollment courses as eighth graders because of scheduling purposes. By moving eighth grade over, that would be open to students. So that probably gives you a little bit of background what we've discerned. And at this point, I would be very happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments. Yes?
How are you doing now? I'm not figuring it out. My daughter's going to eighth grade. I have two concerns. One thing I don't like is with this class, they were the fifth grade class that got moved into the middle school, you know? And once again, they're going to be adjusted, be the first ones to adjust, you know, an older age group, you know? I think at this age where they're 12 and 13, you have a definite difference in maturity from that age to, you know, the freshman age. You know, I think my concerns are social interactions with all the kids. Yes, they are, most of them on the buses and one not. But I do have, you know, concern about, you know, much older kids interacting with much younger kids in any aspects of social. Those are my concerns. Yeah, my question would be more like, how, will there be more control? Like obviously you said that they can't be, won't be separated except for at lunch, okay? Will there be more monitoring or control on the interactions of the children with the older kids? And the hallways and, you know? Yeah, the transitions?
I think it's a lot different than when you came here. Right now, we've got 82 cameras throughout the building that are monitored by the main office, a security person. Not that we need them, but they're nice to have. So there's a lot of eyes in the hallways, even if they may not be able to be seen. It's really a different place and I know you graduated from here. And it's just, it's, trust me, it's different than when you were here. We really don't have a ton of issues anymore. It's not like when I first started. The behaviors, we've got this dean system, it's really working well. We would add that to the eighth grade. But there's eyes everywhere, you know, whether it be through the security system or through teachers being in the hall on hall duty. I don't anticipate any issues as far as the age disparity, the students being classes predominantly with students in eighth grade. They're not going to be geographically segregated other than at lunch, but they'll be with kids their own age throughout the day.
Yeah, I think that's good. She's trying to do dual enrollment and I think it will benefit her and that I think it's a great idea. It would be beneficial to the kids that are doing the dual enrollment and that participate in athletics. I think it's a great idea. It's just my concern would be that.
Absolutely.
We have hall monitors during the halls. Both lower hall and upper hall. So that any time there's students in the hallway, there's always an adult presence.
It's an easy place to supervise. I mean, when you leave here, take a walk around. It's basically a straight shot left and right and then it's the same thing upstairs. It's not like, you know, the middle school when I walk around, there's these nooks and crannies. We really don't have those here. It's pretty much a straight shot, you know, two football fields in length, basically upstairs, downstairs. It's really a beautiful design. I can stand in the foyer right here and see look left, look right, see both sides of the floor.
What about in the locker, like would gym be, gym class be only eighth grade or would it be mixed level? Would there be interaction in the locker room area?
The hope is that we can do it with all eighth grade. You know, it is a state requirement. At most, it would be mixed eighth, ninth, but we anticipate trying to keep it as eighth grade like required most, excuse me.
Hi, how do you come here? I'm Hannah Stuprison. I was wondering, I have heard previously that a lot of the classes are mixed. There are some ninth graders and other classes with twelfth graders. Are there elective classes? That would be addressed to you and I would be?
What we really anticipate is prescribed schedule for eighth graders predominantly staying with the eighth grade courses. The only difference where they'd be mixed in is if they choose to get involved in some of our electives such as the bands, JRTC, art. But if they stay within the prescribed schedule, they'll be eighth graders all the time.
And my second question is, I know that you have other classes such as cooking and what shops and those would be open to all the eighth graders as well?
There will be some electives that are open to eighth graders. You know, we haven't spent a ton of time looking at what courses because we wanted to make sure it was feasible. We've focused on really working on that. We have some ideas. There would be a lot of electives that would be available, but not every elective.
We're asking the students to become more mature and move to the high school and, you know, stand up to the pressure, pressure, a little bit more pressure up here and have to be responsible. They should be able to be subject to all the same opportunities that every other student has.
So my question slash comment kind of goes along with what Eve mentioned. My daughter's in seventh grade. He was among those students that were moved abruptly from fifth grade, or moved abruptly to the middle school. And there was no transition period for them. There was no way to prepare them for what they were coming up to in middle school. It happened at the end of the year. There was a form that they were going to be going to middle school. There was no pomp, no circumstance, not that they really needed that, but there was really no way to help them transition to that next level. And I want to know what your plans are if this is what you decided to do to get these students ready to be in a high school environment.
As Mr. Caladino said, we are just looking at the local pieces right now, making the decision. Once a decision is made, if the decision is made to move the seventh graders over, then that's when the detail comes. One thing that is a priority is transition. Students need to be more over, the students need to be acclimated and it's not going to be done just like that. There will be a plan, it will be a transition plan and we'll do everything we can to make it as successful as possible.
Can I ask a question to the audience? How many of you parents think your kids are ready to go to high school at 12 years old? Maybe 14. Can you raise your hand? Anybody think their kid is ready intellectually, individually to go to high school?
You know, we got a chance to, myself and a middle school teacher had a chance to visit quite a few of these ages, 12 grade congregations. And STEAM with the principles, some, they created that after the fact. It was a traditional nine through twelve and they brought the eighth graders in. And, you know, we talked about the affirmation process. We talked about the age disparity issue. And to a point, all we said was the best thing they ever did for those eighth graders. And I hope in four or five years, we can say that as students graduate, that was the best thing we did. You know, we researched what they did. We have the induction program that they used. We have a lot of documentation on what other schools have done to make sure that this is an easy process, to make sure that students feel comfortable, to make sure the transition is a positive one. And we anticipate utilizing, stealing, whatever you want to say, many of those processes that were in place and that were.
But I've also heard stories of people, professionals in the area that have started eighth grade in other, in high school in other towns in this area and it didn't fare so well for them.
And you know what, you know what?
It was Fall River. And it was, it's a professional in this town that started eighth grade in Fall River.
At the high school?
Pardon?
At the high school.
That is correct.
I don't think so. But I'd be interested, if you can find out, I'd be interested to hear about that school. Because I'm not familiar with another school itself, so.
Again, it may not be coincidental, it may be coincidental, but the group of kids that you're talking about moving was a same group of kids that thought that they were going to be integrated to school and they were comfortable in that and suddenly found out within the last two months before they were to continue on to sixth grade because they were getting moved to the middle school. Now, they're looking forward to the eighth grade and they're looking forward to often circumstance that has been established in this town for those students with the eighth grade gravitation, the formal, the other things that come with that. And they were really looking forward to that. And now the same group of kids that was ripped out once is going to get ripped out again. My only hope is that when you develop this questionnaire and you're going to pass out to these students, considering the fact that we live in a democratic society, that one of those questions on that questionnaire is going to be, that each and every student be able to answer the question, do you want to make this move? And if the majority of the students answer that question affirmatively, then fine, they've learned a valuable lesson and the move is made. However, if the majority of them say, no, I'm not interested in this. I would like to finish out my eighth grade after middle school because it's sounding to me from the presentation that you just made that it's going to be numbers neutral, it's going to be budget neutral. The middle school's not over the crowd. This school, yes, may be under the crowd right now, I get that. But so there's no negative effects from them staying over there for an extra year before they came here. And I only hope that when you put this questionnaire that you stated you're going to put out to these students, that their voice is allowed to be heard in this. And that decision is weighed heavily in the final decision because these kids were already uprooted and moved once and now all of the sudden, they end up being the same group. Aside from the 42 that thought it was a wonderful idea to do dual enrollment, come over here and I admire them for that. But the rest of the kids are going to be the ones that may not be interested.
I promise we will publish the results.
My name is Jennifer and I'm a sixth grader and a third grader, so I'm not affected yet. I will say that I am dead set against it. I think it's an awful idea. I was against the fifth graders going over to the middle school. I can tell you that my daughter has aged so much due on her years that saddens me and I think it's an apt beginning for this to go to the middle school. I think that you're going to have a huge backfire on your hands and you're going to end up losing even more families. I think that a lot of families are already looking. I can tell you that I am one of them. And it saddens me because I have always been one of your top supporters. I have always been pro your camp. I have always been on Facebook saying, give them a chance. We can do the best we can, they're a good town, let's do this, let's sit together. And I'm saddened and I'm devastated and so unhappy that we are here again having these conversations. That we are once again making these decisions about putting the younger kids in with the older kids. You're posting them to grow so much faster. And yes, they're all the buses with these older kids, but it's 20 minutes a day. Yes, they're the kids that are dual enrollment, but it was the parent's choice for the dual enrollment. Just let them be kids. Let, let's just take a break from all of these class changes that this town is having and do the best that we can. I'm just, I'm grateful to the town because they're telling you it's going to have a backfire and you're going to end up having more out of the town costs. Family's going to lose control and that saddens me.
And if the ER nurse will be ready for the kids and what they're going to be exposed to.
Yes, I agree with you, Jessica. In terms of, as you said, these weights, can we make weights per grade? Do they have to be set up as departmental things? You know, English and social studies, math and science. Can they be grade things as opposed to? And I wouldn't be opposed to seeing the eighth and ninth grade sort of be that for each other and then the 10th and 12th kind of split up. Is there a reason to do that sort of? I'm more interested in the model.
Sure. I think there'll be some segregation, but unfortunately, we're not able based on the design of the building to keep them totally separated. We've got issues with, our chemistry labs are on the second floor, back in the school. They're going to need to have access to those. Obviously, you know, they'll have to travel to cafeteria, visit. They're going to be intermingled. There's no way to keep them 100% segregated. But we can be creative in trying to keep the classes, you know, the humanities classes close by, you know, basically back to back. Maybe science and math close by, but as far as to just lock out the wing, it's impossible to do that at this point.
I just have a question, I'm maybe elaborate on why this is happening. It seems that like maybe five, 10 years ago, they closed two schools and now they need to open again. I mean, it's just a terrible habit that they've just gotten into. And my second question is, if you talked about transitions, Mr. Caladino, I wonder what some examples are of transitions on where it's going to help these kids get through if you're asking.
Sure, and I think I thought you had a little mention, you know, there would be some orientation where the students would come over here at the end of the year and give them their schedule and give them a tour of the building. I anticipate we do a cookout over the summer, bring the families in, bring the students in. I mean, those are just little pieces, but there would have to be a tremendous amount of orientation, transition meetings, just to make sure the students felt comfortable. We usually do an open house in the summer. Have the kids go around, check out the classrooms so they can figure out where their class is going to be located. We have to do a lot of that and we'd be doing it for two grades. So we'd be doubling up, you know, but it would be two different days that we'd be doing some of these transition plans.
I understand that before they get here, what about when they get here?
Right, we want to set up a mentor system with the eighth graders have a upper hospital, hopefully senior mentor. That's something we have. We've kind of seen that Spennasiana did something similar to that where they trained the seniors to be mentors, the seniors that are interested. And it's kind of a big brother, big sister type thing. So we've got a few ideas, really decent things we have to put together if this is moving forward. But I would promise we would have a great plan and the students would feel more comfortable walking in there day one if this happens.
Can you elaborate on why?
We're looking at it because number one, our middle school's pretty clout. There's not a lot of space. We also have less opportunities. We would provide our eighth graders with additional opportunities at the high school because of the various courses. We also could strengthen the dual enrollment courses that students have the opportunity to take as eighth graders. And we feel like the afternoon program we could offer our eighth graders at the high school could be strengthened because of the greater advantage, greater resources.
I still have a lot about dual enrollment. That is a very small nucleus. What about the rest of our challenges?
You're right. It currently is a very small. You're right, it currently is a very small nucleus, but we believe that if we have our student body up here, it may, it would increase opportunities for students. Right now, it's very small. My, the eighth grade class is approximately two hundred and two. There are students that have the abilities to be in higher level courses, we just don't have the ability to get them here, we don't have the ability to offer those courses at the middle school.
What would happen in terms of students that, unfortunately, there are students that want to go to different media charter schools, upper Cape? What would happen if that happens? Because eventually, once they're in eighth grade here, will they be able to explore other schools? And how would that compare to the, like, upper Cape? How would they take them in, although, like, will they be ahead of the game academically? How would that look, like, will students in eighth grade that want to attend another school, or ninth grade?
Well, certainly, they can attend the other schools, that, this would not stop students from going to upper Cape, or Taylor, or wherever else they would choose to go. Academically, we believe they would be, they may be academic, and they may be on grade luck. I think it's all, it would all vary from student to student. This would not block student opportunities at all. Excuse me?
There would be high school kids that are in eighth grade in high school. I get what you're saying, one's from high school, you can't transfer them to upper Cape.
They would be...
Say you're halfway through, they're counted as high school kids, they come from middle school, they're middle school. Once they come in the high school, are they high schoolers or are they middle schoolers?
They would be in eighth grade. This would be an eighth grade, or maybe go to the ninth grade. It would be considered a ninth grade.
I think, my sense is, and I think it is concerning everybody, what I'm hearing is the motivation, is the why. And when you were just saying, space is a mission, well, technically, it's not, they're voted, made for a thousand students. Budget, it's budget neutral. We wanted our son, or want our son to come into the dual enrollment program because we haven't felt that there's educational needs in the middle school. And for whatever reason, there's many reasons, high school has them, and we're just going to pretend that this meeting is taking place before this is on level one to level three. There seem to be more educational opportunities for him here. And it just seems to me that if I do math correctly, if there are eight hundred students in middle school, two hundred of which are eighth graders, those are going to come over to here, it's parity. And so what I'm worried about is the problems that have gone kind of, like, in middle school, are just going to be shifted over to high school. And it wasn't a perfect solution for our son, in my opinion, to stay dual enrollment, and you know that he would enjoy the class very much. But we too wanted him to stay at his school as a middle schooler, and not have to kind of shuttle back and forth. But it just seems like, even though there will be more opportunities for him, same problem, he's still going to come over. I guess I'm really looking forward to true motivation, and I'm assuming it's some kind of budget change. Because it seems to me that the main reason the high schools perform better at the class is because there's smaller class sizes, there was more, two more types of classes, more opportunities for the kids to explore. And so if you're going to put two hundred more kids over here, I'm sure that's going to disappear. Getting back to what this gentleman's saying, Alex has never been able to be an upper classmate, people may, or be able to be an upper classmate, because they just keep transitioning up. So even though we were interested, we're interested in the dual enrollment, it wasn't a good solution. And now I'm worried that what's going to happen now is that's going to be a great act for them, and just not get the same results. Because it said right on the presentation, budget neutral, space, the room, the issues, not, I mean, really kind of keeps us to action motivation.
Well, I assure you that it's not going to dilute the program. In fact, academics, we are working extremely hard to make sure that our academics are rigorous. We provide our students with exceptional opportunities. We've been bringing in programs, we're giving energy room in, the IP, philosophy, and that will be a totally different program and way of teaching for our students. So no, our students will not, it will not be watered down. As far as motivation, you're right, it is going to be relatively financially budget neutral. That's not the motivator. What we're doing is we're looking at what we can provide our students, and how we can provide our students the most academic opportunities, challenge them, and provide them with opportunities to grow and to expand. That's our goal.
Well, so the dual enrollment program, as we explained just originally, with the huge amount of opportunities, there could be enough grade classes, enough grades, and that's still accurate.
Absolutely.
You've said that you want to provide them with more opportunities, what about stability? You're shuffling these kids all around, it's not stable for these kids. Twelve, thirteen-year-olds do not have the right maturity to make proper decisions sometimes. And when they have older kids to influence them, it makes it even worse. So are you going to provide them with the stability?
Am I going, I, the decision has been made.
I know, but the school system, we need stability for this job.
We do need stability.
And I don't see that.
What I, what I see right now with this class, I think everybody has a bomb about them not being able to be the older class, like, they don't get to be the upper classmates, this class right now, like, there's two shifts that they've had to go through. And I don't see an excessive for it. Like, I don't see this, this, some can say, like, we need to do this because the limited is space, or because of a budget concern, budget neutral, there's nothing, there's no, like, forcing motivated factor. I don't understand why, I think you guys are going about it the right way, I'm glad that everybody's here, and you're allowing us to give input. I just think if you do this transition, why commit it, wait another year? Let this class not be that class that constantly gets here.
Oh, well, you're right. And I know where you live. To Alex's point as to why is this, this was something that was talked about with last year's class. I have a daughter, and, like, her eighth grade dual enrollment, who is here half the day. I can't say enough wonderful things about that program. Mr. Palatino did a fabulous job amplifying them into the school, making it so that they feel that they can express their concerns and things of that nature. However, my seventh grader cannot be a dual enrollment child, can't do any of that. So what I'm going to, was brought up last year, it's capable, and brought up again this year. Where it's going all possible, and this decision has been made, and that's what we're here to do.
I just have two things. One, let's, we all know why you're doing it, and that's fine, I can stand by you. Why, you aren't using Wayen here, so let's expose them to high school, what it has to offer. That's okay to say that. I mean, I, as a parent, I can say, I, my daughter didn't come here, she goes back to Cape. That was twice I made my daughter that I felt was going to be the best success story for her. I don't know if that makes them want to offer, because I know a grand hand, and it's very hard to chart what a high school has to offer, and I don't know. So let's get the eighth graders in here, I think that's the motivation here. Let's get them in here, I don't think it has to do with athletics, because they have more options here. I think it's to say, all right, you've had your eighth grade, you've seen what's offered, now you've made the decision, you still want to send your kid to upper Cape, you don't know how to district, for whatever reason. My other question is, what do you want the kids to do with the middle school, for these seventh graders who are now going to be promoted to high school? Are you going to have a seventh grade graduation, are you going to have a seventh grade coming home? I think that's the kids' concern. What do I get to have? Now you're pushing me on to high school, I want to have those things to do.
If the kids tell you, everything that's tradition comes with them, we're not, I'm going to make sure that anything that should have happened, will happen, whether it's graduation, you know, maybe the up to graduation, some first year, dance, whatever it is. I mean, that, that's easy, and it's, for me, it's really fun because I get to see the kids in a different light. So whatever is tradition, and I'll certainly work with Mr. Mickle, if this happens, you know, we'll make sure all those things are in place. They're not going to miss anything as far as the after school, the traditional dances, whatever it may be. That's important for all kids, and it's really fun for us to be involved in that, because again, we get to see the kids in a different light.
Yes, I think that it would need to happen at the middle school. If they're leaving middle school to transition to the high school in that program, that would need to happen as seventh grader, not as middle school. We're going to have seventh grade graduation now, because how are we going to come? Back into the next one. So I guess my question for Mr. Mickle, do you have some sort of plan on what you might do to promote them from middle school to this type of?
So were we talking, Jamie, about just seventh grade?
Yes.
Okay, so it's interesting you brought up that question, because for the first time, we have a seventh grade being happening in March, first time we've ever had that, just for that age group, the admin team in anticipation of the discussion of this, we're talking about ways that we can end the seventh grade year different from the other two grades. So absolutely, we would explore ways to make sure, you know, that we said goodbye to them in a meaningful way. Yes?
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess my question is, you're talking about, it's a lot of students. And the high school students, we so understand student-wise, and what is the reason why? Are we just trying to fill the high school up with the kids from the middle school? Is it about the middle school, we're going to fill them in with the kids from the daycare school and the math school? But what is the real reason for it? A lot of students at high school. When I was, when I was at school, it was, it was, it was already too small, it was overcrowded, it was going to fall in schools. Now, going out of this, thirty, forty years later, progressively less and less of the students are leaving, stimulating. Is that what we're advocating here in this process? Or do we want, do we want the high school to be the students that really want to be, want to learn? You said high school, all these students, and five hundred and twenty, now they're going to the street. That's half, almost half. What is the reason for cutting students in the high school? Where are they going?
Children was built for a thousand. I didn't, there wasn't, I didn't say that there was a thousand.
No, I said when...
I think actually, it was more than...
I said when it opened up, it was already...
What was the intention of the question?
I might add, because I studied the situation in depth, and there are, as usual, a multitude of factors associated with it. Just to give you some history, if you go back, it's now probably fifteen years, we peaked at about thirty-five hundred kids in the district. So we're down to numbers, probably, right? Where do those come from? Well, believe it or not, it's not upper Cape. Upper Cape has been up and down, up and down for years, in terms of absolute numbers. And, and they will probably keep going up and down for a variety of reasons. And that, they represent forty to fifty kids per class, okay, something like that, okay? So it's not upper Cape. School choice is having an impact. Religious schools are having an impact, charter schools are having an impact. But believe it or not, there's also a huge factor, simply Massachusetts as a whole, aware of, is shrinking in terms of the number of kids that are visiting in this town. And so when you combine all the factors, not upper Cape, as I said, because that's been a constant over the last fifteen years, but if you combine the impact of a small number of kids overall, and the fact that there are more choices about where those kids can go, there's also school choice and charter schools, religious schools have always been here, okay? That's the reason. And yes, it adds up to a thousand kids, but when you, when you take that over, over an entire thirteen grades, if you will, K through twelve, it's not that many kids per grade, but it starts to add up. And the choices are that much greater when you get to high school, as you're about to enter high school. So that's why the high school is shrunk more than the elementary schools in middle schools. So that's the answer, the demographic, if you will, answer to your question.
My question now, and now you know what's next.
Well, Massachusetts, just so you know, Massachusetts used to have president, probably fifteen or sixteen congressmen. We're down to about eight or nine in Washington, D.C. The entire state is not kept pace. So we do, we are, we are shrinking, and just how do we fill them? It is absolutely true that the school committee with this superintendent wants to make this school system, and the high school in particular, a school of choice. Dual enrollment, STEAM Academy, dual enrollment from, from high school to college, another type of dual enrollment. International baccalaureate, you're just beginning to hear about it. But I guarantee you, outside of Sturgis Charter School, as some of you are aware of, you can't find international baccalaureate almost in the, in the entire Commonwealth. This is going to be a very unique program, and exciting, rigorous opportunity for those that want to take advantage of it. So we are doing things that will make this legally a school of choice. But even though that's exciting for individual students, in the end, if we keep shrinking as a town in terms of the number of children that are here, we're not absolutely shrinking, we're still the twenty, twenty-two thousand people. But the type of people that are here, that are moving in, have changed. More old people like me, right? So that's, that's having an impact. So frankly, I am less concerned with building a school than I am with making sure that it's a school of choice for those families that live here, and for some families that don't even live here. I'm more concerned with the quality of the education available in the buildings than I am with the number of kids. Yes, it creates budget problems when they keep shrinking, I acknowledge that. I do acknowledge that, I think it's part of the reason we don't have the east open, we don't have west open, we don't have heaven open. All those were things that we could do that didn't hurt kids and, and help the budget. But it's the quality that counts, not the numbers. I also, I also firmly believe that the high school is a great place to get an education. And I'm not just saying that, some of you may know I'm a tennis coach. Well, the wonderful thing about having been a tennis coach in the last decade is, I still have kids texting me all hours of the day, telling me about their experiences in college. I have not had one single kid, and I ask them, I ask them for a reason, "How well prepared did you feel going to WBI, DSU, UMass Dartmouth, all over the place, okay, as a result of having gone to this high school?". And they're all saying, in fact, one stopped me, she was, had a, had a job over the Christmas season that, at one of the restaurants in the mall. She said, "Coach, I just want to tell you, I was really glad I went to where I'm at in high school". And she's now a junior at, at BSU. So I wouldn't worry about the quality of the high school.
Are you going to be able to, like, most of the parents here are concerned about the kids, about the kids' education, it's entered, it enters into them, but they're concerned about the kids, the kids' school. Are you going to guarantee the same success for these kids? They can force them into the high school at eighth grade level, as, as, as they just move in?
First of all, I completely separate the notion of, and I'm speaking for myself, not the committee, I completely separate the notion of the quality of education with where a person is physically located. I, I'm standing here, I have not decided how I'm going to vote on this issue, okay? I am thrilled that you people have been so open and honest, and communicative, and articulate, and eloquent about your feelings related to this. I am going to take this home and figure out, okay? Part of my decision will be what is best for the kid, that I actually believe that they were going to bring education regardless of the decision made, okay? But there are social emotional issues, the superintendent is extremely aware of. In fact, that's a, that's a new hot topic in these days, what are the social or emotional implications for our education and how we, educators, and how can we meet those needs? So we're acutely aware of it, okay? So I hope I answered your question.
How was the taxes going in the university? We had two and a half come up.
No joke.
Shut down. Hopefully, it was, it was, hopefully, two and a half, I was going to say, help the school system. If you push on, the two and a half, I'm sure that was, that was going to designate, help the school system out. So really, about this, about this situation that we're talking about right now, that vote went down.
Yes.
That's going to get voted out every time this comes up.
It's not coming out again, not for the foreseeable future.
Right, because, because age level of the town. So you've got senior citizens in this town that don't have any interest in supporting this system. And that vote comes up, the two and a half, it's like, out of there, out of there. It's going to get shut up each and every time.
Let me give this back to the superintendent, to the term meeting, but let me just say, I believe...
Incoming eighth graders are going to be on board, but ultimately it's up to the parent.
Sure.
And a particular set of like my daughter would probably be like, oh yeah, I'm going to be with the seniors and I'm going to be like, oh no, you're not.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify that for all of you know that's the parent's concern.
How about you put in a request for Mr. Minkl if this meeting goes involved to have the conversation with seventh graders and I like the idea of the voting, um, you know, we just thought about doing something along those lines. So, you know, all depends on how things go today and then we go from there. Uh, but I think there's still a lot of work to be done. And I didn't, and I didn't want, you know, when I approached Dr. Shaverhood, um, in late October, we didn't want to, and we had spent some time visiting schools and doing all homework and making sure it was feasible within the confines of the school. Um, so we've done all homework behind the scenes to get to this point and, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. This isn't over by any stretch of the imagination. There's a lot of work to do.
The other concern that I have is dismissal. So when the bell is off, because I know at middle school they dismiss fifth grade parents and then I think sixth grade voters and then the older kids. But here it's just going to be a free draw, correct?
Um, but we've got, uh, the bus is teaching me plays. We, we obviously replicate a lot of what was on from middle school to make sure that students are comfortable. I mean, I really need to spend a lot of time with Mr. Minkl if this moves forward. They can hit a grade, um, he's been in there for thirty seven years. So this is going to be very helpful for us if this moves forward to utilize him and make sure that those, you know, concessions, whatever it is that are in place to make sure the kids feel comfortable, whether it's coming into school or dividing school, we would have all of the place. But I, I like the standard, at least the style of the way.
Also, we as seventh grader who were running towards the middle school as fifth grader, we were looking forward to being like big, big, big top dogs. Us, we were getting off to go to eighth grade and we're going to be like top dogs again. But now we're going to be one. Now we're going to be in the high school and we're going to have to wait till the twelfth grade to be, um, yeah, top dogs. And it's like, it's just like, I don't find it fair to let eighth graders and eighth graders say that we're following them to basically every single school we go to. Because the, the chance that we get to get a week of us to go to is like that.
Thank you.
Before we take any more questions, I was wondering if I could just speak to the students. Um, I'm the assistant principal here, Mrs. Freyess. Um, I understand that you're a little scared. I think that next year you'll be a little scared too, even if we didn't make the move. You came over as eighth graders, we'd still have that fear of taking that next step. We understand that. I will say that we do a lot here to try to make our kids feel comfortable. We have an advisory period that happens every day in the middle of the day for twenty minutes. I have an advisory. Every teacher has an advisory. Mr. Caladino has an advisory. He has all of the dual enrollment students. And I have to say that every day I talk to my kids, they have problems, they have concerns, and I help them to overcome those concerns and overcome their fears. And my advisory is only about nine to ten students. So you have that time every single day to spend with someone that's not your regular classroom teacher necessarily. I don't have a class, but I feel that my students are pretty close to me and that when they do have a problem, that it is solved and we can make them feel more comfortable. Our students here are really pretty outgoing, most of them. And as some of the dual enrollment students said, um, our kids are looking at you as the same way that they were when they were freshmen. They understand those same type of feelings that you have. And we don't have. I don't think that's ever really been a problem that I can see. When we have upperclassmen bullying or, you know, trying to fool the younger kids into this or that, it's not like the movies. It doesn't happen. And those transitions will happen no matter whether it's this year coming into the high school or whether it's the following year coming into the high school. And I, I just want to assure you, we're going to do everything that we can, if we do make this move, to make it as streamlined and as positive and as helpful as we can. A few years ago, I was working, um, as part of an assistant principals committee in the state of Massachusetts, and I served on that committee. And I worked with another teacher, another assistant principal, that was in charge of her transition program at the school. So I have lots of ideas of how to make this work. We talked to our guidance department already. We've talked about some of the things that we would like to do. Um, we even talked about the possibility of a new eighth grade field for about ten minutes ago, well, ten minutes before this meeting. So we are very much aware that this is, um, we know, again, you had that fifth grade group that had made that change. So we understand that. And in our planning, we will certainly, if this comes to be, we will certainly take that into consideration. Our department chairs meet every single week. We've been talking in this office ever since the idea came to us. Um, we've been talking to our guidance staff. We've been talking to our teachers. And, uh, there's just so many ideas that we had where we're kind of excited about. We were afraid for us too. You know, this taking in another class, another grade. But at this point, we're starting to get excited about it. So I, I just hope I alleviated some of your fears. I know I'm not going to take all of them away, but I can assure you that personally, and I remember Caladino a little, as every teacher in the school will do the best that we can to try to make the transition smooth. I just wanted to address the students because, um, I have a, a grandson that you're all a little bit older than you, and he, he goes to Tom High School. But he went as an eighth grader. And he was very much afraid to go to the high school. He said he wasn't going to school. I, I remember. And, uh, he spends an awful lot of time at my house. He's a ninth grader now. He, there are no fears. That transition was going to happen one way or the other, whether it happens as a seventh grader or whether it happens as an eighth grader. It's, it's still going to happen. And it's natural to have fears. It's absolutely natural, and I would expect that. But if he, like I said, my grandson's not the most outgoing student, but he's just fine where he is right now at the high school. Yes?
Ms. Freyess and Dr. Shaverhood, my concern is social emotional peace. You had mentioned that earlier about in terms of making sure that the social emotional peace will be addressed. Um, and, you know, I just want to say to the parents, honestly, just parents in here, anybody in here, let's, let's reality, our kids are going to pass, right? You turn on the news and they're already seeing changes. You listen to things. Right now, our kids are growing up faster than we want them to. So regardless if they go to eighth grade, they're already growing up fast. So my thing is, how will we support them with their social emotional needs? What, what's your plan? What would be your plan?
Well, I, one of the things that we've talked about, um, Dr., um, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Schwab, Dr. Schwab is, um, going to, uh, we're being deported with the New Naviats program. I'm sure you don't really know what that is, but it's a, um, it's a program that had, comes with a curriculum through our guidance department. And it has curriculum based on social emotional development of students, um, from the middle school level all the way up through the high school. And the program that we're purchasing, we are purchasing that, that curriculum that goes along with it. And one of the ideas that we've talked about, again, this is not written in stone because you can't claim that we don't know yet. But one of the things that we have been talking about is instituting that curriculum in the advisory period, you know, with just the eighth grader, something very, very much appropriate for them to transition into the high school. Not only the transition piece, but dealing with, you know, emotions and, you know, things that kids are going to be rigid between those ages. Um, and whether or not it happened at the middle school or here, we were talking about instituting that anyway. So we're even more interested in, in, in that curriculum now. That's just one piece, for instance.
And Melissa, similar to when you were in school here, we actually now have a behavioral therapist who's on site to work with, to work with any of our students that have any issues. So to speak to the social emotional piece. We have a psychologist that's available as well. And obviously, like you remember the guidance councils that we have, we have two great guidance councils in this building. That's phenomenal. So I think, I think we really can get those pieces. And I know you appreciate that.
I agree.
One of the other pieces that I would just add would be, if we do make this move, providing the social emotional support for our kids is a very high priority. We've not really been able to parse this out yet, but we currently have two guidance people. For me, bringing this school together, there are seven hundred and some students with two guidance people, that's not adequate. So we would be looking at providing additional guidance staff. We would be revisiting, we have a social worker here now. We would be looking, is that, will that remain adequate? Or do we need to look at providing additional support? That conversation though is just not isolated at the high schools. That's just why. It's vital for us to support our students socially emotionally. And we're currently hiring, um, social workers for our buildings. And we will continue to support that because that is an issue our kids need support in. And if I'm going to, if we're going to make a difference in academics, we also have to address the social emotional piece or we're not going to continue to make that way. Brian?
Thank you. Sorry to jump back to, uh, first of all. Um, so with the news, this hit the newspapers. That's what the eighth grade teachers heard about. And we did what teachers do whenever there's a question we can kind of get. Um, and this was after the end of the, uh, after the end of the school year, eight to ten, um, eighth grade teachers got together and they, they emailed me a photograph of what they were down. That's what I'm reading from here. Um, wouldn't be surprised to find out that no one was concerned about social emotional behavior concern. Somebody said the problem is too big. Um, I remember as a sophomore in high school, I just wanted to go to the bathroom. And being a thirteen year old, I don't know if I wanted to share a bathroom with illegal adults. Um, this is unlike the fifth grade when we tried to shelter the fifth graders coming to the middle school. A lot of my former students here, um, walked them out of the parts of the building. They were sharing bathrooms with the sixth graders. Um, so there, the eighth grade teachers were worried about that. They were, um, they were worried about, um, and Scott, I'd be interested, uh, two questions that came up. One was the logistics of the academics. I know that it is a rather clear academic credit accumulation regime at the high school and we weren't sure where the eighth grade would fit in with that, where they would fit in, whether they'd be taking finals, whether they'd be taking big turns. Um, and I would just pass along two other, uh, questions. One was, um, we do have middle school educators who are licensed to teach high school, who have taught for decades in the middle school level. That's all our professional training and education is from. They were concerned about if they're just in the high school and just for schedule sake, they're not teaching juniors, whether they're going to be able to get that education those students deserve. And finally, uh, I know that a week ago, this survey went up to middle school staff about their opinions, their feelings about it. And, uh, I was thinking of the answer, the results we shared here. So when we come here now, I'm going to hear it.
I can speak to the first question. In regards to the credits, there would be some opportunities, and I stress some, for students to receive, uh, high school credit. For instance, this is nothing to do with enrollment. Let's say a student wants to take Spanish one, they could enroll in the Spanish one high school course and receive five credits towards graduation. So that'd be one opportunity. Uh, banned as well, you know, the opportunity there. I mentioned some of our classes. So there would be some opportunities to receive high school credits without being in dual enrollment, just by some extra, extra, uh, electric courses. Predominantly, there would be eighth grade courses taught by eighth grade certified teachers, and the eighth grade teachers would stay with the eighth grade teachers. So as far as certification piece. But I want to stress, Ms. Freyess and I spent a lot of time looking at the ninth grade classes over the years. And we talked about transition. Transition is going to happen, as Ms. Freyess mentioned, but it, it's kind of different now in regards to transcripts, GPA, competitive transcripts, and competitive schools. Students, when they transition, it takes time to transition, took time to be the transition with a teacher. Um, I can't, I don't know how I was given for my first year, but you can tell me later. But I'm sure I have a little time. I know about that. All right. And what we want to do, one of the, one of the strengths, when we look at strengths, we can assist, uh, also maybe with the eighth graders coming over, it gives the kids a chance to transition into the high school. Ninth grade, first term is a tough term for high school students. The schedule, the eight, three minute period, the expectations, the rigor. Now, we take some of those things and put them into the eighth graders that come into the high school. All right. And the rigor would be similar to what's going on in the middle school. That's not going to change for initially. But now they're getting activated to the school. So they hit the ground running when it's high stakes. Day one of ninth grade, the transcript turns on, GPA turns on. Now they're activated. And we're not losing that whole freshman year. We're losing grades on transfers, GPA credits. We have kids that figure it out, but it takes until the end of their freshman year for them to figure it out. And they figure it out. So maybe, maybe it's third term, maybe it's over the summer, they turn this off later and, and they're, they're ready to roll. But what happens is because of that freshman year, their GPA is so low, they're having trouble getting into state schools nowadays. And those are the, I mean, I, some of our best kids are going to state schools because of the economics behind it, because of scholarships that are offered. So if we have the potential of this to move forward, having these teacher eighth grader, we can do, we can allow for that transition to occur again, whether it's throughout the whole year where it's not high stakes, eight, one when they walk in. So, uh, you know, I think that's one of the biggest pauses. But I'll, I'll let Dr. Shaverhood ask your last question.
Thank you.
Sure. So the survey at the middle school of teachers as to whether or not, um, they're in favor of this move is not a complete survey. In fact, the deadline for the survey, we sent out another reminder today that it would be up to close the business tomorrow. But once we get a representative group and we feel like we have most of the responses, we can certainly share it.
I was just wondering about the class size, how much does that would be, we are adding to our needs today?
Remember, we'll bring the staff over. And our teachers here, um, have advanced classes in their schedule. I followed negotiations, uh, many years ago. Um, we changed the schedule. Our class size is probably the lowest in the district and, and we would maintain small class size, um, based on the transition, having the teachers come over. Average, I know it fluctuates because, fluctuates because of the special needs in, in those classes, but I think it's fifteen instead of four or five, I think.
For your class size?
Fifteen, average fifteen, I think I sent over to you. So remember this, advanced placement courses where I might only have nine or ten teachers, spec- uh, special needs classes where I might only have seven or eight. But on average, I would say freshman, sophomore, eighteen to twenty, juniors and seniors, twenty to twenty-two. So we're asking, we would anticipate eighth grade being closer to the ninth and tenth graders.
So would you be offering, so I know you have freshman safety net program right now. Will you be offering any grade station appropriate as well?
Absolutely.
Now would you be, uh, for the kids, for their adjustments?
Absolutely. About, I was just talking about this the other day. We call it the eight, nine, it would be the eight, nine safety net program. And we were just talking about it the other day. If the move is to have the eighth graders here, we have that. And for those that don't know about the safety net program, it basically, we track, if students have a trouble, we have an adult that tracks them, speaks to the parents, coordinates the plan, has the students stay after freshman, help the teachers on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Tuesday, Thursdays, monitors that, and then really works for the students to try and coach the students to improve their grades. Uh, it's worked out really well with a lot of freshmen. This is in the second year. We would absolutely replicate that. And, uh, and that's something, that's kind of the unique piece. I'm able to steal some things from Mr. Minkl. So one of the middle school that's working on wealthy eighth graders. And also pull down some things we're doing for some of the high school kids. And I think it's going to be a nice, a nice match.
So when they're switching classes, from the bell rings, and they're going from English to math, they're going to have all the grades at the same time switched?
No, I, I really, we have to work, we have to work on logistics of that. Um, you know, I, I, I was more interested in figuring out what other schools have done, have this meeting and kind of figure out what direction we're moving in. The possibility of having an alternative passing time, the possibility of having, you know, the bell. I, I've been here, um, as assistant principal. We had, you know, nine hundred and somewhat students. It was one of the largest groups we had. And we had everyone passing at once, but obviously there wasn't the age disparity. But we would definitely work that out, take into consideration, um, you know, if we have a separate passing. It's funny, when, you know, the eighth graders, the dual enrollment came in, you know, these are all kind of concerns. And, uh, it's funny that I didn't get to pick them up all the way. Um, they, they just went right in. But we have to figure out, you know, logistically, and I certainly want some more help if this moves forward from the parents. I'm just trying to find some of those pieces. Um, we can do it either way. And I would think, for me, that's definitely not a deal breaker. We can figure that out.
In the bathroom situation, I was just wondering if they would have their own?
I think they have to have their own bathroom. Again, logistics and I'll be asking parents to help us out with the pieces. But I think it makes sense to have their own bathroom. We've got plenty of bathrooms. I mean, the bathroom's not a issue.
She's got a water. That's what she said. So if she can do whatever she wants, she's going to go.
She's going to have to have a watering facility. Have you, have you got a mayor or secretary? Scott, I think you've got a mayor or secretary. She will love your water, your water.
I'm a seventh grader that was also going to middle school here at middle school. And I think looking at eighth grade kind of like good idea because, um, it's going to happen anyways. And I get that we're younger, but I think we'd better, we'll be exposed to like a better learning environment.
I will take two more questions.
Okay, your one. Um, you talked about other programs that you could have studied. Will we have those data models to be, um, can we look at, look at the models and, and look at, for which we sound like we can do something?
Sure. So I, I pulled off the DESI website. I believe there were twelve schools that had a traditional eighth through twelve that were kind of on the eastern side of the state. Um, we spent a lot of time looking at Devon's Yarmouth because it had similar demographics. And they had, um, similar class sizes. Uh, ten, ten principal was kind of less than our, and it's one facility, pick his brain, grab everything he had. And, um, he's only email away as far as that goes. We also looked at Montanoi region. Those were our, some of our visits. And then we had, um, two other schools that one of our opponents visited. And I mean, they were more in the west of the area. And, um, but I can absolutely use some of that information, uh, as far as, you know, the size and some things that we learned. We have some notes on their visits. Uh, but it was, DY was really interesting. And they, it's funny because everything he gave us the same comments we brought up here. The only difference was that they had to bring the kids on the buses, um, because they had seven bus runs where we already had the kids kind of intermingled on the buses. But that was his biggest issue. And I said, all right, well, what up on you there?
I'm also in this program, but they're not in the program.
So, thank you for that. My first graduating class just graduated in two thousand and fifteen.
It's been long.
So, right. So I believe this is six years that they've been doing it. And, um, it, it's been, and he said one of the best decisions he made. This is, uh, probably a thirty year educator. So he's, he's got a pretty good pulse on things. And it's worked out really well for them.
Do you have any ideas, state why, how many, how many school systems did the doctor present on, how many school systems, that's double the traditional model which is four years here?
Sure. So what you, what I saw on the DESI website, there were about, I think it was about twenty some odd schools that had eighth through twelve. There were a lot that had seventh through twelve. Um, well, there were, there were twenty, I think it was like twenty-four, twenty-five that had the eighth through twelve model. The problem was a lot, a few of them, western mass were much smaller in size. I wasn't really interested in finding out much from a school that only had two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty kids. Uh, but there, there, if you go on the DESI website, and I encourage all to do that to look at the different schools, check out, even if you can't get to visit, check out the school websites and see what they have, how they set it up. It's, every school is kind of different is what I found. And there's no perfect way to do it, but we felt, based on the conversations we had, that the Devon's Yarmouth model was, was just a great model. And again, demographic, size, location, we felt it was very terrible for what we, what we have.
Now, so you go back to, okay, I have this idea. This presentation that you bring to the adults, explaining everything, that's fine. But we've also had a lot of our students stand up, some one pro, some con, whatever, that I would hope you would make a very similar informed presentation. But then let the student's voice actually be heard and let them decide, especially this particular group, because reality is that they are special because they did, they were the ones that will transition. I've grown up in this town my whole life. And when I graduated in eighty-six or when I came through, it was still secondary. And then the middle school was traditionally what it is now. The high school was traditional. And these kids are basically, they're, they're put in the forefront of whatever new things you're buying. But they've already went through it. My, my daughter was baby, she was a little younger, so it wasn't quite as traumatic. But it was a little traumatic also. She didn't know what you would expect. Same thing is going on now. And their voice should be allowed to be.
I, I agree. We'll do that. And I, I will promise one thing. Ms. Freyess and I have almost fifty years to mind this district. We provide accessibility, but I, I do appreciate and I agree. I'm here for the students because they're the ones who really matter. I mean, they're the ones who are going to be in the forefront. They're the ones who are going to be the youngest transition. You'll be hearing stories, but they're going to be the ones who will absolutely, you know, I promise people, we will be there to meet with those students.
So this is a school related meeting between, I think it's decided that it's over. And I noticed the president said only two more questions, but if there are any students that still have a question, I'm going to keep the meeting open for the students. Yes?
Um, I have a question about, um, STEAM and dual enrollment. Can we do them both at the same time?
Yeah.
Yes. Students? Yes? I'll come back to you. That's all right. I'll come back to you. I understand. Yes.
You talked about the eighth grader being in the central high school. Maybe I'll send a period of being ignored or this being ignored or that. Would there be anything extra provided to us to help ease our parents?
Yes. Well, if we choose to do this, those who transition, we'll be bringing you over here, we'll be working with you, we'll be working that. How do we make this as seamless as possible?
Yes?
So I'm in STEAM seven, so I'm going to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Would you stand up?
Okay. So I'm in STEAM, like Denver's team. And, and Denver's team, they have like their own like, and the enrollment classes are period of, yeah. Um, so would it be somehow like, yeah, like, ask will we be in the middle hallway or would we be in the student next hallway? Could I completely, we probably also have a hospital enrollment, but would we be like right next to?
So Scott, adjourning classrooms?
We do have adjourning classrooms. Um, so if that's a question, we could make that happen. Uh, I know all about the STEAM program, but I don't know a lot about the logistics behind it. But I, uh, back to back classrooms are not an issue, even in science, they're all back to back classrooms. So, um, we would certainly work that out. As far as always, I'm not sure what we can do in the hallway, but I don't know. I, I find a classroom doesn't take too much into them in the hallway. So I'm not sure what we can do there. But definitely back to back classrooms would be an issue.
Any other students? Sir, do you remember your question?
Um.
Were you all set? Do you have a question?
I think Noah had one.
Noah?
Yes. Okay. Noah, you got a comment? Noah, Ronald is our student representative and a very valuable member of the school committee. Stand up, Noah.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. Um, about the lunch situation, you said that eighth graders have their own lunch. Does that mean that would bring back three lunches if we had?
Right. Yes.
All right. And you also mentioned that they're able to get credits as eighth graders for some classes. Would those credits be eligible to, if they wanted to go to different schools, could they take those credits or not?
Absolutely. Um, you know, we can't speak for other schools what they would take, but if they transfer those to other schools, um, they should be accepted. Most schools that we spoke to did accept them. Um, so it's definitely something that they could transfer as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Students, you all set?
I'd say I have a couple of students. What, what do they think they like or need as a helpful tool, maybe or tool as part of transition? And maybe if they're going to answer it now, maybe you have to use a poll survey.
I think it's a great survey question. Why don't we do that? Is, uh, who's doing this over?
We, we can.
We're taking the questions.
Okay. Did you hear the question? A great point. Thank you for that. I am grateful for your time. I want to stress two things. One is, a decision has not been made. This is very valuable feedback. And there will be a decision made at a school committee meeting at a later date, once the superintendent has also decided what she wants to recommend. And this is a process, part of the process for her to decide what to recommend as well. So you've, you've had a very valuable role and I greatly appreciate it. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second for adjourn. Thank you very much.